Okay, we will go down to item 7.3. Consideration of American Rescue Act, ARPA funding request for senior center support form to provide up to $50,000 for each senior center's capital expenditures. And this is brought to us by our administrative office.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen Cutter will be presenting this item to the board for consideration.
Good afternoon, Board. As your Board is aware, Lake County was awarded 2.5 million of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds and your word.
Twelve point.
Twelve point five.
What did I say?
Yeah, you missed 10 million.
Oh, 12.5, sorry. Fine, I'll be exact. 12,506,226 dollars. Sorry about that.
I'm scared.
So subsequently, we had the Board set up an ad hoc committee to go over possible usage of these funds that would have to comply with the final rule from the federal government. And during those discussions, it was suggested and approved by the Board later, $300,000 be set aside for assessments or other needs to set organizations up for success, senior centers. And subsequent to that, it became clear through other direct conversations with Board members that the best way to do that would be to provide funding for capital expenditures. And before your Board today is the actual form that would be sent out to each senior center that they would have to apply for the funds with staying within the guidelines where within U.S. Treasury Department and Lake County guidelines. So the final rule, because we have to claim these funds through this, I call it slurs, the state and local, I don't want to go through it, but we have to claim these funds with the receipts to claim them as allowable. Each entity would receive the funds if each entity provided receipts for these capital expenditures. If at any point there are federal or state funds that are received for the same exact purpose, it would have to be repaid back to the county. But other than that, we're here just to allow each senior center to apply up to 50,000, for up to $50,000 for capital expenditures for new roof, windows, solar vehicle, vehicle for meals on wheels, appliances, and anything to that effect. And currently, I have on here a submission deadline of February 14th. That was the original Board date that had planned to bring this forward. That was always meant to change depending on if we want to, if the Board wanted to give them two weeks or a month to provide their response or request. And that's pretty much it because the document, whether you guys have any adjustments to and approve to send out to the senior centers.
Is this a reimbursement or?
Yes.
Okay, so if the senior centers don't have the funds to be reimbursed?
We can front the money. It just has to be proven through receipts that the expenditure actually occurred and was done. And if, as long as it's up to 50,000, then we provide that backup when we claim. If only 48,000 worth of receipts are received, then we'll need to have the 2,000 we sent back to the county.
Also, if we do advance monies to the senior centers, I respectfully request that we have an agreement in place that outlines what they're going to be using the funding for and their obligations to submit receipts in a time they matter.
And I didn't go over that, but within this request, there is a requirement to have an agreement with the county that would have that information in there.
Supervisor Swatier?
I think.
Oh, Supervisor Green?
Sorry, item B on page two, I see there's an attestation that all capital expenses weren't budgeted and a direct result of financial losses from COVID. Now, ARPA in general, you know, is kind of like money thrown out there without necessarily a requirement to show loss. So is that an ARPA requirement? Are we, I assume it's going to be an easy burden to meet, but it's odd that it's in there.
It is an easy burden to meet, and there are requirements related to COVID-19 within it. Within ARPA, each county government can claim up to 10 million for lost revenue, and that just has to be governmental services. Everything above and beyond that, if you so have the funding available through the grant, has to be per the final rule. And within the final rule, it is COVID-related. Now, if like the roof, has it been, the roof has been leaking since, let's say, 2020, that qualifies. So they just have to be financially hampered due to COVID. But it is very COVID-specific. The free and clear money is the tenant million that we have set aside through the committee for other activities.
Supervisor Swatier?
So I'm going to suspect that most senior centers had some hardships during COVID-19, so that's not going to be a difficulty to seek out those, that portion of it. However, I think that, number one, for the amount of money and for it to be so specific to almost infrastructure type of things, I mean, just by delivering meals with the amount of extra seniors that requested and required the service of our senior centers, that probably came at a loss for a lot of our senior centers. I know that, and so I'd like to see it not be so rigid about infrastructure or capital improvements, but for the purpose of senior services to our seniors, prove to us a loss, and then we can provide you the reimbursement of what you're providing to the seniors. But this just, I feel it's too specific, too rigid, and it should be broadened. I mean, one of our Vision 2028 is to provide support for our seniors. The service itself is the support that they're providing, not necessarily the building. Obviously, you need a building in order to provide the services, but not every single one of them owns their building. So for some of them, are we asking them to do infrastructure upgrades, and we pay ourselves back for the upgrades that we're going to do to our buildings because they happen to be our buildings? It's not an equitable situation for every senior center. Everyone has a different situation, and I know that each one of them will know best what their needs are in order to serve the seniors best. So that's what I would like to see. I also have been told, and I'm sure that Councilmember Overton is here, she's also the Director of the Senior Center for Clear Lake Senior Center, that there was a grant provided that could have been used for infrastructure from AAA. I am not on the AAA, and so I'd like to know if maybe a Board member can provide more information or if someone can speak to that because are we complementing that? Are we duplicating that? It just seems like that might have already been provided for the specifics of what we're looking at. So my personal opinion is I'd love for it to be a little bit more flexible for what the senior centers require in order to make sure they serve their clientele the best, our seniors, rather than telling them specifically what it can be used for. I'd love to also look at the conversation of equity. Not every senior center is equal in the people that they serve, nor on where they stand financially. And so I think that is a secondary part to me, but primary is the flexibility for the senior centers.
And I don't disagree with you. We would have to look into the final rule, whether it can be claimed that way. It is, final rule for claiming the ARPA funds is not wide open for whatever we want. That's why we geared it more towards this, because this is very much claimable and an expense that is acceptable through ARPA. But we can, we can look at it and possibly bring it back.
And again, I can let Ms. Overton speak to this, but I know in my discussions, just regarding Clear Lake Senior Center, the amount of reserves that were utilized in order to accomplish their goals during COVID-19, in my opinion, could easily be shown as a loss during COVID-19 that then could be recuperated through some of these funds.
I can look at the final rule. That's all I can say about that because my first reading would, certain expenses like that would not be something that we can do.
Okay.
It does not mean I will definitely look at it and see what we can do, though.
Supervisor or Vice Chair Simon? Yep. So kind of the same comments along those lines of being restrictive, and I understand the ARPA funds, but I know there are other opportunities where you can use it for capacity building, you know, obviously loss of revenue, recovering those. So obviously, they're a subrecipient, and they have to go by that. Is this how we're doing it? Because right in the ARPA funds, you can be a subrecipient since the senior centers are kind of tight.
Issuing grants.
Okay, so we're just going to the grant, all right. So yeah, I would like to maybe, here it says the ARPA funds may include but not limited to this list that's on here, you know, so if a certain question comes up to that manner, because I agree, you know, solar, I think we're looking hopefully to put on the ones that we own. We're looking at a long-term solar project for those types of things for the park lots. The roofs, windows, make a little different. Obviously, meal on wheels was the huge challenge, and our senior center stepped up to do that with all the added costs. I mean, they're still doing it now, which is well-received, so doing those. So I guess my question would be, number one, if we could just add that in or not limited to this list, those requests could come back because they may. And then also, yeah, they don't have the funding, so I don't, I don't agree with it being a reimbursement program. We need to, they fill it out, we give them the funds, and then we kind of work with them. We have the area, right, the area on aging or AAA to work with them, but making sure they understand that this is available to them and.
As long as we get receipts back.
As long as we get receipts and we continue down that road, because it's going to be a heck of a task for the federal government to come to everybody to try and reclaim these. Want to have as many receipts as possible, but it might happen in a decade or two, but we'll see.
And that's why we want all our.
Yeah.
Ts crossed and Is dotted.
Yep. But in the agreement, it already talks about receipts, making sure you have all those things. So that was my thing to open it up to as much as possible. And it can't be a reimbursement program. We all know. We got March for Meals coming up this month. We're going to be trying to raise money. All of our senior centers are doing that by doing deliveries and being out marching. We get to do it this year, which is excellent. You know, each one's different, but you know, they have a little parade through town, which I think is awesome to bring recognition to all the March for Meals programs that are happening, so those are my thoughts. Not easy. I don't have a simple suggestion, just like I said, just adding something, say, may include but not limited to these items here, you know, or something like that.
It does say may include, but it doesn't say not.
Where's it say that? Oh, yeah.
Right in front of the eligible.
May include. Okay, all right. So maybe I'm missing, maybe I'm reading it up wrong.
Those were just trying to be examples of possible acceptable items.
May include but not limited to, or something like that.
Go ahead.
I appreciate Vice Chair Simon bringing up the reimbursement. I also agree that I think we can easily make it an agreement between the senior centers and look for those receipts and inside the agreement. If you happen to not spend all of that money by a certain amount, then you'd have to return it, or else all the receipts that match the requirements or the potential list of items, that I think would be the easier way. I think we need to walk forward with trust. These are agencies that are part of our community and that do quite a great service to our communities. But I also agree with the not limited to, just to make sure that it doesn't feel like it's just an infrastructure grant. And what I'm going to request is, let's find a way to make that possible. I think we can. And whether that's moving one of our other ARPA projects outside of the 10 million and bringing this into the 10 million, there's maybe some possibility, but I think we can find a way to make this happen, I think.
I will do what I can. The idea about moving the 10 million isn't, because that's not a government expense for us, but I'm sure I can find some kind of, within the rule, I'll see what I can work out. Is it, my goal is to help out the senior centers. I'm sure you all know that.
Yep, absolutely.
That's appreciated.
Yeah, I have a question. What are the, it's six senior centers, right? Is that what we're thinking? Which ones are we talking about? Because I know Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, Lucerne, Live Oak, is it Kelseyville?
So I didn't want to bring it up directly because we have a closed session item, but that one, Kelseyville is the one who wouldn't be included because of our other ARPA.
Okay.
Allocation.
What about Upper Lake?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's right. I didn't, I didn't, I just assumed and I didn't know, so I'm just trying to make sure. All right, thanks.
I'm missing one.
Anyone from the public?
Well, I do really appreciate that you guys have considered the senior centers of Lake County in on this because, as we all know, they're very needed, and the pandemic definitely showed us how bad they are needed. And for our facility, we have over-doubled even today. We were into the triple, and we went from four routes to 15, just to give you an idea how we expanded. And we were already set to close on April 1st before the pandemic because of non-funding from our own communities. We did just through AAA get what they call the infrastructure, and I'm going to put that in quotes, but we couldn't do any infrastructure really with it. Things that we need is enlarging our refrigerator and freezers, you know. It would be nice if we could put doors to bring in the outdoor space, which for the pandemic, that's one of the things they would like to see happen, which the city, we do have a city building, but they would agree since we're permanently there to allow things like that. But I think what we really need to focus on is, you know, it's all about the well-being and health of our seniors. And so the grant really needs to be a little open to maybe just stating that. And how we did with AAA, the one that we just were, we've been working, talking about, is we give a list in quotes of, and submitted that to the AAA for the funding, for their infrastructure funding. And, you know, so we had to stay, they're going to give us that money, and of course, we have to show receipts so that we spent it in that particular way, and any money left over would, of course, go back and probably be put out again for other uses at the senior centers that may not have. But as you stated, I understand you have a closed session on Kelseyville, but let's say they need a new roof, they own their building, you know, that would be different. Or Lucerne, who is always in desperate need, that's been kind of a baby of mine since I've moved to Lake County. I love that building and would love to see it fixed up so that they can function as a true senior center. They've had a rough time over there, but the rest of us pretty much are owned by the county or the cities. So it's not that, there can't be agreements to fixing up the buildings, but to save infrastructure would be really hard to just state that. There are lots of other things that I think that we would need, and when you say reimbursement, there's no way. I mean, that just couldn't happen. But I think we went with the status that we just did with the AAA where we submitted a list and an estimate. You know, those estimates changed because by the time they got this grant going through, you know, prices had already went up. You know, I was notifying them, saying, by the way, I got notified by this company, the price is going to go up $500. So, you know, we have to consider that there might be some changes in prices even if we give a quote. So I'd like to, I'd like to kind of leave it open so that we can actually use it for what we, each one of us needs something different. It just is. We're all different areas. We're very low income compared to Middletown and Clear Lake Oaks. They get as much in one day as what I get in a whole week, so on donations. So I just really like to try to keep it as open as possible for us to be actually be able to use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Metcalf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services. As some of you may or may not recall, before I stepped into this role, I used to oversee the adult services programs here in Lake County and understand the funding challenges. The area agents on aging receives funding through the Old Americans Act, which is so inadequate, and I also would advocate for this funding to be as flexible as possible. And Stephen, you know, you and I worked on this years ago, and I was so excited to see this on the agenda today, and so, and this will also benefit the folks that Behavioral Services serves as well. And so I just want to advocate for this, and hopefully, this can be as flexible as possible because this is a much-needed, these funds are so needed because I know how the senior centers struggle. I haven't seen much of a change over the years since I've left, and so I just wanted to throw my two cents worth into this discussion because this is, this is extremely important to our community to serve our older adults. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the Zoom room?
No hands in the Zoom room.
I'll read an email from a.
Sure.
Someone, so it's from Betsy Kahn. She would like to suggest that the release of these funds be directed towards bolstering their capacities to respond during emergencies. For example, Cern Alpine Senior Center does not have a backup generator, and the building is hugely difficult to power up. Terry Logston is working on the state's recently launched program for establishing community resiliency centers, and we have discussed the need for senior centers to serve in that capacity. For example, equipping each one with satellite phones, while it's costly, would ensure continuous communication with emergency management resources. And she would like to thank us for contributing these suggestions in hope of strengthening our whole community together, so basically supporting the concept, right?
Yeah. And I think that is a conversation one step past where we are today. I want to make sure that the senior centers can do the work that they're supposed to be doing, which is serving seniors before we kind of, I mean, that is another conversation that's happening, but this money, you know, the intent that we had with the ARPA committee is to make sure that they, they can continue to serve, and we wanted to set them up for success. It does sound like the things that were mentioned for Clear Lake could be used with these funds. I don't, I didn't hear anything that wouldn't be allowed. I don't know if there's other things, but having some flexibility in here is more than appropriate. There's quite, I mean, there are infrastructure, but there's also appliances.
It's not infrastructure at all. It's capital expenditure, so it's anything that's capital, that doesn't have to be infrastructure related. It can be a vehicle. You know, it's just basically big one-time expenses.
Yes.
It's not as strict as I think everyone thinks, but.
And just to clarify, I believe Ms. Overton, when speaking of the kitchen stuff and appliances and story, I think she was talking about the grant that she's already received, that she's using it for, not what she would like to utilize these funds for. I just want to make sure and clarify that. So it did sound like it fit what we were offering.
That would fit.
But it was more speaking about the grant that was provided to all of the senior centers and that they've already had access to those funds to fulfill some of the things that we are listing currently.
Yes, and that is an opportunity, but it's not a large opportunity. It's, 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 it's significantly under 50,000. Is that what the Clear Lake? I'm trying to remember, because each.
We actually got 89,000.
Oh, you got more, okay, yeah.
I needed so much back.
Okay.
I didn't want to be a hog, I could have added more.
Right. Yeah. I think at the end of the day, our intent is just setting them up, so if we can be more flexible with what their needs are, I'm fine with that. We want them to continue to work and serve.
So do you want this come back once I've made it more flexible or just make it more flexible and put it out?
Yeah. I mean, is there a way that we can just fix it and?
Until I look at the final rule, I can't say exactly what can be used, but I'll go directly from the final rule and give, make it as flexible as I can.
Okay.
Because it's all about claiming it properly.
Is there any, you know, we keep bringing back, bringing back. My only concern with that is, we know the senior centers need the money, so, you know, my request just may include but not limited to the list here, and then, yeah, we're going to have questions, and it may be a no, well, that's not going to work, you know, we have time to do that. My thought would be get the money moving towards, just like you said, Joyce, I don't know how long it took to get the AAA funds, nine months, a year, you know, it's like if we're there. So that would be my, my request today, if we could just do some word changes or wordsmithing that may lend us in the direction to have that conversation. And if it's just limited to this, then some of them are just, well, I'm getting appliances, I'm going to do what I can, so. So that would be my thoughts, and also not a reimbursement program, a direct funded grant program with the simple MOU in place. So those are my thoughts. If we're going to be talking about any generation, our seniors and the senior centers and folks using them, they don't have time for us to wordsmith stuff. Let's get them the funds.
Well, and I, we don't really know, yeah, I agree, I agree, because we don't know specifically what these asks are, and if we try to build the policy around things we're not really sure of, I think it might be easier for the senior centers to reach out directly to Stephen to have their needs worked in.
One already has.
Okay, good.
So I have no problem working with each senior center, and.
Yeah.
That's really what it would be to me, is, from what I've heard today, this may be relatively what goes out to the senior centers, but the main goal is, they need to talk to me, and with whatever their idea is, I'll find a way to make it work within the requirements as long as I really can.
Yes, perfect. I mean, that's all we can do, right?
If I can make a stab at the wordsmithing, because I think really eligible for reimbursement from the ARPA fund, meeting the criteria of ARPA fund final rules, may include, and then there's, but not limited to, and then have the list. That way, we're telling the senior centers, we got this money from somewhere, and we have to follow their rules. Go ahead and provide us what you think you want to do, and let's make sure we can figure out how it fits, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't. If it does, then, already says that?
Yeah, the guidelines about you need to, about the final rule.
That's the reimbursement part.
And the reimbursement part is 100%.
The reimbursement part would need to be.
So if we could just change that for sure, just say it's a program, not a reimbursement grant.
I forgot that wordsmithing portion, but yes.
Supervisor.
I understand the intent.
Okay.
No, I was basically going to say the same. Basically, that there are final guidelines within the rules of getting this funding, so doing what you just did provides that. So it allows them to, if it's outside the scope of what's listed on the list here, what is it, a new roof, solar, a vehicle for deliveries, appliances, building remodel, HVAC, weatherproofing, but it's something else, as long as they coordinate with Stephen to ensure that it follows the final rule, right? That's what you called it? Right?
Yep.
So if you follow the guidelines of the grant that we proposed, and that's really makes it where it's open to whatever that grant says.
Right. So if I'm like hogback senior center and I'm asking for a karaoke machine, it's not going to count. Like, no, we can't do that, right? So that's just an example.
You're going to have to buy that yourself.
What if during COVID it broke down?
Okay. Oh.
But I think a little more wordsmithing in that might be appropriate, just because not limited to, everything on the bullet list so far is a capital thing. So if the leaning is we're towards services or supplies to do meals and stuff like that, and he's not entirely sure we can do that, so I think just get on discretion to wordsmith it, to address non-capital items, services, however he might word it, however you might word it. So if you want to wordsmith it here, my suggestion would be go ahead and throw something about services or something in there, including not limited to the things you want to get in there, but if you're just saying, we're going to wordsmith it and qualify this list of things that are all capital things, that's not going to be super helpful to the senior centers or to Stephen. So is this the direction that we want to take out the word reimbursement, and we just want to fund directly services to the extent possible, or, you know, I'm, we need a better direction on the wordsmithing?
Well, I think, sorry, Chair, I think we do have fairly decent direction on exactly how to proceed. Remove reimbursement, get an agreement for the advancement and the obligations then of the senior seniors, and also make sure that it falls within the guidelines of the rule, the final rule.
Yeah.
I agree.
Simple, but.
Yes.
And the rest as this stands, or is there a need to change where it says the final rule for ARPA, where it kind of provides those specifics? And I just want to make sure we're not setting up for the wrong expectations from the senior centers. Is that directly from the final rule, what's written in there in that second bullet point under guidelines, or is that an interpretation of the final rule?
I thought it was direct, but.
I'm just wondering if you need to come back to this item later today and maybe go back and make sure that, because maybe it just needs to say must meet criteria final rule from ARPA, and that's it, and then?
That's probably enough, and we definitely know what your intent is.
Right.
So we can easily make the changes you are requesting on here without having to.
Maybe grant, my apologies. A delegation of authority cannot be discretionary. A delegation of authority cannot be discretionary, it has to be ministerial, so you do have to establish the parameters for this. And the discussion is great, but it still has to translate out onto the page. It doesn't have to be exhaustive word use, but it does have to be sufficient so that it's very clear. So if you want to say that all proved expenditures must be in compliance with the final rule, that's what you say.
Yep.
And then you're done, and just remove the reimbursement wording, and that should complete it, and that would be sufficient when you're giving at least parameters of your direction to admin.
So moved.
All right, I got a motion, a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.